Do you know that both of you are so shameless? I cannot believe this! Are you kidding me? Since morning that I left for work? Eh? My god! Dero? So since morning, day in, day out, the only thing you know how to do is to sink on his laps, suck him out. Eh? Till the end of the month, so that they will pay you salary. And you, you'll be there, swallowing what you don't know and smiling like a goat. This Vero has been my neighbour for Donkey Yen, and I can tell you with all assurance and with my full chest that Vero does not brush her teeth regularly. Eh? So what do you even see now? What are you enjoying in this dirty pig? And you, Vero? What are you enjoying in a man who doesn't have a job? Eh? I'm asking you a jobless fool. No, 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 no. You don't need to tell him that. Of course you don't need to tell him that, because he knows what I will do to him if he opens that foolish mouth to utter a word. As in, "Just say, 'She am here!'" and you will see what I'll do to you. In fact, I will arrest you, and I'll make sure they throw you in jail. And you will not see a mouth to suck for Donkey Yen, because I have seen that sucking mouth gives you life. Ha! Do you know that there is a law in this town called indecent expulsion? I'm very sure you have not heard of it. Oh yes! In fact, I was with the Deputy Governor the other day, and we were deliberating on that issue. He was telling us things about it and the kind of punishment he wants to mete out to people that have found committing that crime. So, take that useless love of yours. Go inside your house, unlock the door, and stop showing the people in this compound dirty things, because we are not interested. And let me tell you, before you even think of flouting my orders, you know this boy is a jobless boy. In fact, the only job he has managed to keep is selling dollar at the go-slo. Hmm? If I like, mboya allegation. Yes, I will go to my office and I will tell them that I suspect that he's a criminal. I will tell them that I suspect that he is one of the bad eggs terrorizing people in this town. And before you can say Jack Robinson, they will hook you up and throw you inside the cell. And you will never smell the light of the day again. Now, take that useless, rotten, and indecent love into your flat before I count to five. One... Two... Three... Foolish goats. Love like a rabbit.
Honey?
Hmm?
Does she have such power?
I don't know. Such against. All I know is that I've seen her working with the Town Council Tax Force for illegal KK transport operators.
Wow.
Uh-uh. What is that? Eh? Don't let it bother you now, baby. Don't let it bother you now, Pepe Body, they do them. She said I'm idle, but you and I know that I'm not idle. Baby, am I idle? You know I say "human hair", I say "original rondono human hair", from Turkey? Yes. Please. Is it my fault that I do not have a shop yet? Is it my fault, baby? Don't worry yourself, I will get a, I will get a shop. I'm selling online. It's not a crime to sell things online. Please, baby, don't let it bother you. Come and continue kissing me. Baby. Are you scared of her?
No, no.
You don't have to be scared of her. This is my house, she does not have rights over my house. Eh? Yeah, she can say anything she wants to say outside, but inside here, she does not have the right. Come and be kissing me. Today you kiss me ninety-nine times. Why are you start?
How can you love kissing so much like this? You know kissing is for my life.
I don't know. Like I grew up loving kissing more than the others.
Okay, good.
Yeah, love, see you, kiss me, kiss me.
My angel.
Baby, baby, eh. Hi! This is too much. Hi! They, they two, they don't sleep. Eh? Making loud noises like rats. Kissing like pigeon. Eh? And all these noises into the ears of of a woman who doesn't even have a man. Is this one not looking for trouble now? No, they are looking for my trouble now, it is obvious. Hmm? Hi. If I get into the mood now. Hi. What will I even do with myself? Hmm? If these idiots succeed in putting me in the mood, balasikama ho, how will I handle it?
Respect yourself, stay. Can I go for you?
Oh, scum, 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 scum. This is enough! Even if it is dancing now and cockamamie wrestling, this one is more than that. It's like a one less somebody this time. Hey! You're on our list for assault and assault. Where are you? Hey! What is going on there? What is going on there? Come! Are you people kissing inside that room? Who is making that useless and foolish noise? Are you mad? It's something of a two people. Eh, in fact, eh, Dero? Dero? Come and open this door. Open this door now! You are very foolish and useless. Open this door! You're nonsense!
Aunt Ete, good evening.
A second. Look at my grandmother calling me auntie. Anyway, it is not true that I came here to see. Hmm? Where is that your useless boyfriend? Where is he?
My boyfriend, he's sleeping inside.
He's sleeping? He's sleeping inside, but his hands are touching your junction, making you laugh like an idiot. Not so! He is sleeping, but his hands are not sleeping. Eh, my friend, shift from that door. Shift from that door, because I'm going inside to drag him out. I know he's inside, hiding because he's naked. In fact, just do yourself a favor. Tell him to come out the way he is, because I want to see him now.
Oh, you can't do that, oh. You can't. I can't do that, that's now, you cannot do that.
She said I cannot do that. I cannot do that. Really? You are harboring a deadly and dangerous and robber in your house, and you say I cannot do that, right? You want the police force in its entire strength to come here and raid this compound early in the morning and escort both of you to the station? Is that what you want?
No, no, no.
Is that what you want?
No.
Okay. By the time I count three... One! Two!
I told you, I told you he was sleeping.
Follow me. I want to ask you questions. And I need to be writing your answers down as you're saying them to me. Let us go.
I should follow you?
Yes! You said you are innocent. That is the only way I can find out. Listen, I need to ask you questions. Because part of my duty as a security tax force is to query questionable and suspicious elements anywhere I see them in town. And if, 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 if I am not satisfied with their answers, then I quickly hand them over to the police force for big action.
Okay, let's go, you can ask all the questions you want. My boyfriend will answer you, he is innocent, baby, let's go.
My friend, go back! Go back! Let him speak for himself. Speak for yourself. Hmm? And you? You're not going anywhere.
Eh?
Yes! Because I will still come back and ask you your own questions. And if your evidences do not marry, then I know one of you is lying. And that will end you what I have always said to you. A criminal having won for that matter, who spent all his time giving a foolish hairdresser who believes in her hair that she sells hairs. Yes!
Okay, okay. Let me go in and read my series, I'm ready. Yes, let's change.
Do you think I'm joking? Do you think I'm joking? You do not follow me now. You, all right. You regret ever knowing me. You! Go in there. And lock that door as I am looking at you. Because I don't want you to come over there and listen to what you are saying. So that you now know the answer when I start asking you your own.
I will go in, I will walk in.
Go inside and lock that door now! So that I will hear when it opens, I know where. You have bad mind, and you have coconut head. So I want to hear the door. When it opens, when you try to come and listen to what it says.
Now, lock the door. Baby, don't worry, go here. I go to him, he goes, "Oh, listen to the guitar".
You said, huh? Eh! Don't insult my girl. My god, the dog fight again at the hospital. Send her away, forget about it. You feel your husband? Now go inside! Go inside as I'm looking at you now. Go inside! Fast! Fast! What happened? Move it! Lock that! Police! Police there! Get your dry ass off my bed, I need them there! What I want is on your mouth! Look at you! What is all this? So, a young, able-bodied man like you, with all your muscles, you don't have work in this time. The only work you have is to hug and kiss Veronica from morning till night, day in, day out. Is that also?
Officer Ete, I have work.
Wait, wait, shut up! Shut your mouth! Which work are you talking about? Which work do you have? Eh? Oh, so winding your waist all night long, like a hoodlum. And making criminal noises like a frog. Is work? If you make this work, that is what I'm asking you. In fact, you are disgrace! You are disgrace to manhood, you are disgrace to all men, and you are disgrace to this country. Shame! Shame on you! Young man, shame on you! Ah! What is this? In fact, if you open that filthy mouth and say any rubbish here, oh, I will deal with you. I will accuse you of a high crime. In fact, I will go out there and tell them that you are a terrorist. I will just package you, hand you over to the anti-terrorism court. Not here! In the FCT. Oh, that is the draw. Capital. Everything.
Officer Ete.
Shut up! Listen. I am going to deal with you. I will disgrace you. I will disgrace you so much that you won't even see the face and the leg to come back to this town again. Hmm? You think I don't know what you do? You think I don't know about all of your criminal activities? That is the reason you have all the time in the world to carry your two necks next here and be kissing Veronica day in, day out, hugging Veronica every day, making animalistic noises like a fool. I even heard that you are the head of a very watch and dangerous criminal gang.
Officer Ete, no, no.
Shut up! Yes! Yes! Admit it! Come on, admit it! What do you want to deny? Are you saying I'm a liar? Are you saying I'm a liar? Are you saying I don't know my job? Are you saying I don't know how to conduct criminal investigation? Hey! In fact, to prove that you're a criminal, and the only thing you know how to do is criminal noise, make that noise. I want to hear that criminal noise that you are making before. I want to hear it. That wasn't what I heard. Repeat that criminal noise you were making.
Oh! Oh, I'm coming, I'm coming.
Stop making that criminal noise, my god! This is disgusting! You are a criminal. You just promised me that you're a criminal. You said criminal noise I just heard. Can you make that noise? I don't go to the doctor's house. I said, "Make it again, let me hear." Stop it! Stop it! Stop that criminal noise, stop! You are indeed a criminal. I am very angry. I am so angry! I am mad! And I am very crazy! Because you, you, you had the effort to kiss, kiss a woman in front of me. You! And you were pretty lovely! You're a menace. And when I see such things, it makes me go mad. My blood burns. And you, you, you will never know why. Never. That is why she missed this moment. And you will never do. Never. Are you doing? I am telling you what is pining me. I am telling you what is annoying me. And you, you are looking at me with dark criminal eyes! Hmm? Do you know what it means to snatch a man? Hmm? I have snatched you from Veronica. What do you mean by "eh"? Are you a baby? You're not a baby now. Eh? Did you not just fema with Veronica? So you are going to fema with me too this night? Don't worry. Just get up. Lie down on the bed and do as I say. I will be gentle. I will not beat you up. So tell me, do you like romantic songs? Hmm? Do you want me to sing for you? I know you do. So tell me, what song do you want me to call you? Lovu antinti, lovu antinti. Ije munalovu no fadulu antinti. Ije munalovu no fadulu antinti. Lovu antinti, lovu antinti. Ije munalovu no fadulu antinti. Ije munalovu no fadulu antinti. Paul no biakene, yavami sengene muwa. Paul no biakene, yavami sengene muwa. Hey! Oh! Hey! Don't mind the way I'm hard, oh. I am not hard. Eh, that is what scared me, wait for me. I am actually very gentle. I'm very romantic too. Eh? So, this night, it is just me and you. Eh? I have snatched you from Dero. So just get up. Lie down on the bed and do as I say.
I can't believe it.
Are you going to comply? Oh, you look like a changer for you! Cool down! Cool down, baby. Cool down. It's not that serious. Listen. I'm a fine girl. Check me out. Confirm it, fine girl. So, we can just have a good time this night. And in the morning, you can go back to your bedroom. Hmm? My baby. My love. Oh yeah. Come here. Uh-huh. So it's in a romantic way. Lie well, what is, oh! Like, they just lie like a criminal. It's like we are used to being in sex. Lie down well and face up. Because I want to come on top. Lie, lie, lie like this. You know? Let us do this thing with gentility. I like it. I don't like culture. Now, I want you to take a peek at what you could enjoy. Are you safe? Well, lie well. My friend, lie well! Let you dance for me, lie well! Lie well! Oh yeah. Oh, this shit, this shit, my man, no more time here. Eh, you are fuck? Eh, you are fuck? Eh, you are fuck, bring my boyfriend back! Bring him out, eh, you are fuck? Paul! Paul, are you okay? Paulo! Paul, come out! Eh, you are fucking my boyfriend out, who are you?
Who is that person that is stupid? He's talking like this this morning. Who is that person banging like a ghost? Who want me to deal with you? You don't want me to deal with you?
Paul! Eh, you are fucking my boyfriend out! Bring him out!
You want me to deal with you?
Eh! Eh, you are fucking, I kill him, in fact, I want to die! What is all this? What is all this? Even if you are the president of this country, end of this day, no! Come and heal me! After you set someone's boyfriend away since last night, after that, he has not returned. What are stupid questions I asking him? Even if it's white and sad, have you not finished answering all your questions by now? What is this? Bring my boyfriend out! Paulo! Veru... Veronica. Veronica! I see. Veronica. The ennekebe, after eating to his fear, had the glee back and the mind to challenge his god to a fight, to a wrestling match. And that is what I'm seeing happening here now. Veronica, do you want to die? Do you want to die? Eh? You are challenging me! Muma, eh, you are fuck? The only woman that is answering a man's name in the... Eh, charayon? Paul, eh, you are fuck, where is Paul? Bring him out!
Paul, oh, Paul is sleeping. This sweet boy worked so hard last night, so he's, um, trying to get back his energy. So he's having a beauty.
Paul! Eh, come on, step back, be on your back. Yeah? Paul! Paul! Will you take your useless stuff out of my bed and come out here? Now! Let me hand you over to this useless tissue paper. See to it. You have stepped your purpose. I have enjoyed what I want to enjoy. Follow your food soup. Go with your physical out of this place. Oh, Paul! Man, no here. Paul! Paul, 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 did you do anything with her? Hey, God forbid, domene me, abomination. Hmm? How? I am asking you how? How is it an abomination? Abomination because he is your husband? Or abomination because you bought him and paid for him? My friend, go and sit down. This one here is a complete eligible single man. So therefore, he is a national dick. And any girl is entitled to have a share. Onye sebo si, obaka lo. Onye sebo si, obaka lo. Uh-huh. Oh wait, what the, why? Why am I even wasting time with you two fools? Eh? Let people prepare for work, unlike some people who are habitual and do monkey. Ow! No sense. Paulo, tuah! What you are doing? Wait, wait, you, 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 did you put your titty down, man? Eh! Domene me, Paulo, why? Paulo, God forbid, are you serious? Eh! Paul! Paul, sheshe, sheshe, shame! Get out of my face! Look, me and you, we are done. It's over, get out!
Oh, it is not my fault. It's not my fault.
No, it's my fault! It's my fault! It's my fault. Did she tell you rope? Get you run away from the house? Did she tell you? Did she tell you, who did she put to you? Paul, man! Man! Your enemy will just turn your lover overnight! Shame!
I didn't even go in today because you were the car. Veru.
Paul, Paul, he's got you! I go swear for you. Come on, Paulo! Come on, Paulo! Hey! Come here. Hey! Hello? Hey! I'm talking to you. Hello? Hey! Boy! Boy? This people's love is strong. This is the kind of love I should be enjoying from Joseph. This is it. This is love right there, this is love! But no! No! Joseph is in London, fooling around. Eh? For leaking with different women. He allowed another woman to snatch him. To snatch him away from me. Okay. No problem. Somebody snatched my own. So I will snatch another person's own. Oh yes! And I have the power to back it up. But you? I don't know if you know her. But you have entered my list. I will hunt you down. And I will get you. Used and done. That is my game format.
Honey, I'm sorry. Please forgive me. Honey, please, please now.
Be begging me, oh. Be begging me, please. Keep begging me, not a little bit of a picko. Not a young picko, you, 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 like a fool that you are. Keep begging me! They say you will fall into a hole. And you went and suddenly I fell into that hole. Paul, you not be mumu! Are you not a fool?
Honey, it was under duress. It doesn't mean anything, just forget it. I still love you. I'm sorry, honey, please.
Doesn't mean anything! Hey! Doesn't mean anything! I love it to fool other men now, since it doesn't mean anything to you. Eh, I will do my own under duress too. You are very stupid, Paul. Mumu!
Honey.
Paulo, Paulo! Do you get coconut, you know they use that? As you think, you not get sense. Who is making that noise? Eh? Who is that person? Why is somebody shouting and trying to bring this compound down? Who is that fool? Eh, yeah, Veru? Did I just hear your voice? Did I just hear your voice? Come, Veru, even if I say you not get sense, so. Veru, if they not go, you web. Or in fact, if they go, you web. Talk here again. Shout on this sweet man again, make I hear. Uh-uh! And you? Paul? Are you a man or a woman? Eh? What is in this Veru? This same crinker Veru that I'm seeing here? That you cannot dump her? That you cannot dump her? And find a better woman that will treat you well, with respect, the way a man should be treated? Eh? A woman that will not be shouting on top of you, or on top of your head like a mad, mad person? Paul! Are you a gaslit goat? Don't you have a manhood? Why do you take such rubbish from her? I'm asking you. Why?
Would you please? I beg you in the name of God. Leave us alone and let us handle and solve our problem alone, please.
Yes. Veru, did you just shout? Did you just shout? If you talk like that again, God will punish you. You are mad! Oh, Veru! Oh, you now used our. Oh, so you and this one are now our. Anyway? Look at you. You are on your own! You are on your own, you are mad! I actually like the way you called me EJ. Ay! It is very sweet and romantic. I like it. It's like, I will take the name now, EJ. And I will just drop Eji Mafa. That Eji Mafa even sounds like a man's name, sir. Paul? Let's go inside and settle our problems.
Please, forgive me.
You are not going, you are cheating your order! You are not going anywhere! Uh-uh! Oh! So, like an animal to the slaughterhouse. You follow her. Not so. You are mad! You don't have sense! Almost stupid! That is what you are. But I can assure you that you are not stepping on each. You are not going inside there! In fact, you are my boy! Oh yes, you are my boy! I have the same rights like she has! Because that thing that you have been doing to her inside her house. You have also done it to me inside my own house! So? You are my boy! So that right she thinks she has, me too, I have it! What do you mean by that? In fact eh? We will drag you, if it comes to that. We will drag you, on your total well. Yes! That is the only thing. You are under arrest. I will arrest you! And we arrest you! And we... Hey! Who am I seeing like this, oh? My sisters! Who am I seeing like this? Ah, my sisters, oh! I wanted to arrest this one, Paulo, Paul. I have freed him since I have seen you before. Let us go, let us go. Okay?
So this is you?
Fontos pilot! Fontos! Gogo!
Yo, man!
Thank you, Yeroba, oh, thank you!
How did you come? What is this?
Who is Yeroba? You now? Are you not Yeroba? Robber something!
Is it because you've been calling out the names she gave to us? And would not be calling your own name?
Oh, even will give me name!
You are Yeroba! It is of the rubber, eh? Ogo ma and aboma, is she not Yeroba?
She is Yeroba! In case, in case of Kamkam!
Tell me, tell me, tell me, let me ask. Why is she called Yeroba?
Why?
Because you don't have feelings now. Even when a man is killing himself. No feeling.
Better lie. You don't know me very well. I have feelings, oh. Deep feelings. In fact eh? Hey! Small touch like this spam my battery and fund, yeah? I'm only using this Grad Grad to protect my fragile heart.
People, let's go inside. People, we go inside. I am very hungry. I hope there is food in that house.
Yeah, but you ate on the road, inside that keke.
Please, I'm the last one, I'm full of the money, you get on.
Veru! Thank you! So, you knew they were calling me Yeroba? And you didn't tell me? It's a my apple! Okay, you too! You are Yeroba's sister! Yeroba's sister! What are you looking at?
Beautiful family. Artists, they are very beautiful. You know that reminds me, you not familiar with my sister? Don't show a family.
Haven't I told you my sister was hit and killed by an electric pole? While standing on that, eh, the street light in Italy on duty.
Oh no! Don't finish, your sister is in here for a man doing that kind of job.
Which kind of job?
On duty now, under the street light in Italy. I know that kind of job.
Now you stab you. Are you God? Are you God? I, I don't know, maybe, I heard she didn't die immediately. Maybe she begged God to forgive her before she died. Yes. I want us to go, let's go inside. Let's go! Let's go! Are you still looking?
Look at what.
Efikasi, efikas, efikas! Efikas, efikas! Efikas, my friend! Efikas, efikas! This food is so sweet. Do you know that? Among all of us, eh? You are the best cook, Eji Mafa. You is the Rama! In fact! You are the love master! It is, it is, it is, it is Gogo! Just call me EJ for short. Two mia, two mia! EJ for short. You are the best cook! EJ for short!
Because that is why we have come. We came to tell you that. This kind of sweet food eh? Will be best after shitted by a man.
We need you to get married eh? In it is. It is not. EJ for short! It is EJ for short. But that was the text said. EJ for little more for short, baby!
She was the one that said.
EJ for short. You told me you are Paul. EJ for short. I thought you have changed you. So it is. So, 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 you are still an innitito. I even thought that at least? Your husband would have given you small sense. But it is very obvious that he took the one you came with. That is why you wrote. That I received that for six years! Six times! The man had to withdraw you out of prostitution. And packaged you to husband's house. Thought your husband would give you small sense. Please! It is not EJ for short, eh! It is EJ for short. You may say! Please! Efikas, efikas! EJ for them more, please, let's get! This fucking girl went wrong way! They call me. Stop making, making us laugh like idiots. At least! Idiots are happy! And idiots are laughing! Although you know that? Laughing in this age and time is a luxury. I don't know, you're right. Anyway? I had a husband. Where is it? In the bathroom! Oh, man! Eat your, eat your, look at me, even me. See the way you're shouting at the bathroom? It's in the UK! His name is UK! Okay, okay! Ukelia! Okay, plus! Okay! Londono! Londono, we call you! Londono! How did I? London! Okay! Eh, his name is, okay! He is in London! It's okay! You guys should shut up. What I need now is beer. You can eat in beer. I need to drink beer and wash this food down. This food is too sweet. But beer is in the beer bar on the house. Can you believe me? That is where I normally go after work. And cool myself down. Chacking, step, go the one down. That's good warm with, with the cool. Like down, down, down!
Non, non, non! Your father, Mosheroni!
Look at that. The beer that? Our father used to give us. Half of half cup, many little girls. It has entered a lot of. Do you know that? A week cannot pass without me drinking beer.
Over now!
The now.
Like wife, like. Wait, shut! Now I know all those your children, no, you are home, ah, bro, no. You are saying the truth. Those your children, they are just drunk, eh? They just drink. Let me see if you want to open a brewery. Everyone are home. See, you are saying the truth. We need beer to wash this food down. But I'm, you know why?
Why?
When my husband travel to Germany. With his uncle. He told me? That when they were in Germany, that they used to open tap. If you see the way they will be drinking it, drinking it, drinking it, drinking it. Why are you looking at me like this now? I don't know why you're laughing. They, he said that that is the reason why? Your skin is very smote. Skin have, ah, 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 top. Driver! You will do not believe me.
I believe you! I tell you!
The truth! Come to us, go, because? In the regard, she says, ah, more, bro. Because you're going to stand on our wheel. Now, now, koka. Eh, listen. I honestly do not support drinking beer from the bank. It is always good to drink in motivation. And we are women, we shouldn't be drunk, you understand?
You tell your brother, small, small, but not that.
Eh, even the men, are they supposed to be drunk? It is better you drink, eh, a can for a glass of beer. But as for me, I drink just one glass of beer once in three months. I tell oma, cook off.
Oh, yeah. Can I buy don't?
Hey! Hey! Uh-uh! I'm getting it, ah! What is your...
I need to close the business, eh?
Ah! Yeah? In fact, you know... You're a man. How can you have truth in two hearts?
I'm the last born.
No, that is that you have been doing since, you are still doing it.
I'm the last one, now.
Ruma, keep one, keep one. Da-da-da-da-da, keep one. It's not my fault. Keep one!
I'm the last born, eh?
Ah, cool now.
You're the last, eh? My mom is...
Yes, it's going!
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 I'm gonna watch this thing.
I'm not eating it.
Going!
I'm the last born!
I'm not eating it.
I'm a bull.
But you see, you people with love, you will drink that one. Hey, don't worry! You see that place? Without purpose, I don't believe you now. If you see this floor, if you see this path.
I, I what I...
I sing it. This one say, eh, can I have your floor, thank you? This one swear. Oneya bossa! Mia! Oneya bossa!
Today, I feel today. This is a major step for you.
You don't have help, oh, what take you there?
Oh! This one, this person is looking like giant, 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 giant.
What that was, is at our weber side.
Everything that don't happen, that's...
This one is...
I'm a bossa!
I'm starting! I'm starting to...
Panto! Mugi daunku, mugi daunku, oneya bossa! Mia! Mia, muwem.
One of the poncho, no, darling. I'm telling you, as a one, I like to...
No, everything is there like him.
If you see the light, eh? Hey, you want me to have a cook on the... For the cook, eh? For the cook. Hey! Hey! I'm telling you.
Where would be?
There are there, eh?
I'm looking, I'm here.
Ne-ne-ne, farm tree, the farm tree.
What was I do there? You know, this is the looks like a mountain.
I'm a farmer, we're bad. Oba de. Eh, 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 some... You know, I don't know, we go there. Like a nonu go.
I stopped eating wolf.
Like a nonu go!
Dan, I'm tired of messing around. See, eh?